It's Peter.
What time do I have? I don't know if I can read out loud it.
Well, it's six thirty and we've got a quorum. Hey Ben, hello Peter. So, I will call the meeting to order. This is the special town council meeting on April 1st.
This conference will now be recorded.
This is a special town council meeting of April 1st, 2020. It is a budget workshop. Um, we are entirely operating by video. Charlie, I think you need to mute yourself. Um, the only person who is in town hall, I believe, is, uh, is John Carrington. Although there may be some others there. Uh, if you are watching this on, on the screen, you will see the, a selected number of, of members of the town council and staff above it, about, on the top of the screen. And there will be the materials that we are looking at in, at the bottom half of the screen. Um, Sarah Ann, you want to call the roll?
Allspiter?
Did he lose? He may be having trouble with his mic.
Okay.
Is that you Charlie?
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay, good. Um, while we're listening, I remember the, of the castle, while we're listening, it would be best if we, uh, turned our mics off, muted ourselves, and if anybody is on both of, both of that phone.
Tony, you're, you're breaking up. I, well, I had a conference call at work earlier and one of the problems was too many people had the video on and when a number of us turned off our video, the, uh, the, um, reception picked up noticeably. I don't know if that's true here.
Uh, well, the problem that was just happening is I believe my phone thought it was on. Um, it just turned it off. No, I'm getting an echo again. Somebody else has a phone and, and the boom on. Who?
I believe it's Charlie.
Charlie, turn off your phone, please. Cause you'll get, there we go. It will, if, uh, there's a phone on the same time as go to meeting, we get echoes. Okay, I'm sorry, Sarah Ann, I interrupted after Charlie Allsberger on the roll.
Bertha Lot?
Yep.
Bruder?
Yep.
Tony? Freudman?
Here.
Potschberger?
Yeah.
Moran?
Here.
Sharon?
Here.
Shaken?
Here.
Okay, well, thank you everybody for joining us. Um, Terry, I, I know you missed the last meeting because of a house issue, so I'm glad you're back. Um, the first item on our agenda is staff reports and communications. John?
Yes, I'll give an update from, uh, from Monday. Not much has changed, but I'll read, uh, I'll read a few things that the mayor sent out today and some other things about it. Uh, property tax deferrals, the governor's administration is considering using an executive order to either require or provide towns with the option of deferring property tax payments for ninety days for individuals or businesses that attest they have been financially impacted by COVID-19, uh, subject to either a reduced interest rate or at no interest. And cost, which is the community of small towns is asking to, for us to let them know how this would impact our ability to fund critical services at this time. So, I will need feedback from that. Uh, as you know, the budget is online now, uh, for the public also. Our agenda lists the departments that will be presenting tonight, so you can prepare each night. Uh, there is a program budget sent out Tuesday morning and a line item budget was sent out today. And the public, you can participate by sending emails as shown on the agenda on the screen. And that's an email to budget2021@mansfieldct.org. Or you can send old fashioned mail, uh, to the town hall, uh, attention town manager's office. Uh, IT and planning and zoning are working on a plan for a call-in or an online anticipation that we're going to try out later this week to see if, uh, the public can actually call in and then say their piece and be muted. If it works, we can adopt that for future, uh, work sessions. Uh, as of this morning, there were twenty cases in the health district with eleven hospitalizations and four deaths. Uh, they have a number of volunteers for the medical reserve corps, is up to seventy. And they'll be undergoing training by the, uh, health district staff in coordination with state guidelines support. Uh, there's been guidelines for determining when a sick person is well enough to return to work. And that's been distributed to staff. They have to be fever-free and symptom-free for seventy-two hours or seven days from the onset. Whichever is longer, that's fever-free without, uh, medicine. Uh, you may have heard questions about the closure of Wyndham Hospital's intensive care unit. Uh, Hartford Healthcare has a plan, but, uh, our health director's going to get more information on that. Today is census day, so anyone out there who hasn't filled out their census form should do that. A college student, uh, if they live on campus, the campus will take care of that. If you live off-campus, you should consider that, the town you live in, even if you may not be off-campus today on April 1st, you may be home, but they should, if, if they normally would be in Mansfield today on April 1st, living off-campus, they are Mansfield resident as far as the census goes. Uh, there's a, I sent you all the brochure in word format for the town manager search, so any feedback on that would be appreciated. Uh, schools, uh, the governor's executive order, seven R guarantees continued funding to schools, provided staff continues to be employed, including their paraprofessionals. And it also funds transportation at a level that continues, uh, paying benefits for employees. And schools are, uh, still planning about returning to classes and they're also making a plan if the superintendent should become ill. Uh, Region 19 has received applications for their, uh, opening for a superintendent and will be conducting interviews online later this month. They're also receiving bids this Friday at noon for the photovoltaic, uh, solar panels on the roof. Uh, IT is continuing to do a great job for us in town. They're, uh, expanding meetings and planning ways to allow public participation. And they're encouraging and educating from, uh, work, people at home for public engagement. And it, it's good to see all the counselors are on tonight with some help from IT and able to talk. Uh, human services, they're seeing some new people that they haven't seen before in the past. Uh, they're getting rising numbers of people needing help with unemployment applications, especially those with no internet access. Senior Center is looking to begin remote programming with maybe a gardening program. And emergency management, including fire, uh, is looking at uh, housing people that need quarantine, possibly at the community center. These are people that aren't sick, but have been exposed or might have been exposed. Uh, finance, we had a, a new payroll administrator did a great job getting everyone paid this, uh, last pay period, which we all got paid last night. And she basically did that on her own, so it's a good success there. Uh, partnerships, uh, giving daily updated advice to businesses. And pretty much the other departments, uh, no new news since the other night. We did hear tonight on a, uh, conference call with Dennis, uh, Region Four, that Wyndham is moving their homeless into the Innet Stores, which is the old Best Western. So that's what the, you have to do with this, uh, COVID-19 is get them into places where they can be isolated. It just, that was the first we had heard about it. We hadn't heard about that from, uh, the town manager to Wyndham or any other channel. So I'd sent an email out, haven't heard back, but just wanted to let the council know that that's going to be happening. And that's all I have, Mayor.
John, I have a request. The, um, the thumbnails at the top of my screen need to be all the council members. At the moment, it's, it's me, you, Sam, Linda Painter, uh, Sarah Ann, um, Al, Her Royal Majesty, and somebody else who I can't figure out, but if somebody could rearrange?
I don't think I can rearrange it, but if all staff would, uh, except Sheri blocked their camera, maybe that'll help. And if you view active cameras on the top of your screen, where it says view everyone, you can say view active cameras. Tony, I think that would-
Uh, much better. Yep, much better. Let's see, I've got one, two, three, no.
So Pat?
Three, four. I've only got four. Tony? Ben?
Um, you're, as, as long as John is sharing his screen, you're not going to be able to see everybody. That's just how it's going to go. You can cycle through the arrow on the top of your screen, but with this many people on the call, even with only you seeing counselors, it's not enough people to fit in that screen. So, we either think we need to have screen share for the presentation for people watching at home, but, um, maybe once the presentation is over, we can cycle back and forth or something for questions, so you can see people's hands. I don't know how else to manage it.
Yeah, well, the, if I could arrange the tiles so that, cause I could get eight tiles at the top of my screen. I could get eight tiles. I could get eight tiles at the top of my screen, so there would have only been one person I would have to have slid, slid over to get to. But, um,
Tony, can you squeeze the window, Tony, from the-
I tried. I got it as small as it'll go.
Okay.
Ben?
Uh, my experience using these, this program and others is rearranging the tiles is not a functionality that anyone has given.
Ah, that's great. Okay. All right, um, so John, that's your update. Uh, anything, oh, Charlie has his hand up. Charlie?
Uh, yeah, my experience and what I've been hearing is I was talking with someone today and there's, there's a lot of municipal, uh, elections between RTCs and DTCs and everything. Um, my understanding is, is that from what, uh, this woman was telling me is that it's overwhelming the phone systems in the state because a lot of them have been happening over the last five, six, six, ten days, and it's overwhelming the systems. And, uh, what it's doing is that some of them are crashing, or what happens is you're getting choppy results, or you can't get video feeds and things like that. And they're all trying to figure it out at this point because, uh, upcoming, there's going to be a bunch of conventions and certainly you can't have three hundred people on a call. So they're trying to figure it out.
We also heard earlier that Netflix is taking up more than half of the band, all the bandwidth in the country. And so they're going to do something to reduce their, uh, the, the number of, uh, bytes or whatever it is that they're sending, so that that might help. But there is all, there are problems everywhere. Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, Tony, what did you say was taking up the bandwidth?
Netflix.
Oh, Netflix, yes, I would imagine, that's true.
People are watching movies everywhere.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so David?
Yeah, thanks Mayor. Just a question to follow up on something, uh, John was saying. He mentioned that, uh, you know, with, with, um, property tax bills, you know, people, the collection being deferred by some time. I think I heard him say we're looking into, uh, how that will affect, uh, cash flow. I thought, um, Sheri said, you know, with fund balance, it's, you know, we had enough to, to kind of dip into temporarily, so that the deferred payments of, of property taxes, et cetera, wouldn't be too impactful, but maybe I misunderstood what you were saying. But while I'm on the topic, there is one other factor of delayed, um, revenue. And that is that, if I read correctly, the, um, membership fees at the community center would also be, um, well, in effect, um, extended. So memberships would be extended by the amount of time that the center was closed, I think I heard. So I mean, that has got to affect revenue and that's a, that's in a permanent way. That's not a matter of deferred. That means that people that we're going to be renewing aren't going to have to renew. So there's a, there's a permanent effect on, on revenue there. So I was wondering if you could address those two things.
John?
Yes, the first one, it's, uh, the governor is considering that. So cost, the community of small towns is asking us for feedback, just, uh, which for us, it, because of our fund balance, it probably isn't a, a problem. I'll, you know, kind of defer to Sheri on that. But just wanted to let you know that there, it is being considered out there and that they're asking for feedback before, you know, the governor makes an executive order directing that. And the second one, yes, the membership fees by being extended, we don't want to make people pay for the month of April and they're not going to be there. So obviously we'll, they'll have to be extended by a month, so there'll be a month or two with no revenue based on that.
And I, I think you'll hear more about that when Parks and Rec makes their presentation. They're estimating significant losses. Um, come on, Sheri?
Yeah, just, uh, to add, um, I think, you know, a ninety-day deferral would be fine. Um, some of the expenses tend to be down over the summer anyway, as teachers and the schools don't open till September, so those, um, are in the new budget year. So we'd have a little time, plus we have, um, you know, a decent-sized fund balance to be able to carry us. Um, can't go too much longer after that, but, um, certainly we could probably do, handle ninety days without a problem.
Charlie? Charlie, you have to unmute yourself.
So John, to further what David was saying, uh, that there's going to be an offset with regard to the community center, uh, as it's closed right now and as other municipal buildings like the library and such are closed, I mean, are there things that we can do to offset those numbers? Uh, is there's no revenue coming in from them? I mean, are we paying staff while we're not, while those buildings aren't open?
I mean, the main revenue maker is, of those two, is the community center. And yes, we're paying staff. The part-time staff is not being paid, but the full-time staff is being paid.
John, I think also program-related staff, so if they're not running programs, they're not being paid. And that's what their revenue would, would pay their salaries. And, and if the programs aren't running, then they're not working.
Yes.
Uh, they have begun some, uh, programs online for fees, like music lessons and some classes. So there is some, some compensation coming. But I really want to hold this discussion for when we get Parks and Rec, uh, on the, on the agenda and there'll be lots of time to talk with Kurt in more detail about it. Um, are, anything else, John, or are we ready to move to budget review?
I'm ready to move to budget review if you are.
I am. Go ahead.
I'm going to share my screen.
Ben, you had your hand up?
Just because of what you had brought up earlier about not being able to see all the counselors, maybe what makes sense is instead of taking questions as we go, if John can pause and unshare his screen so you can see everybody again and do a couple of question times rather than how we normally do where people sort of jump in, that might make sense.
That's what makes sense. Um, but let's get a good chunk of information in before we break, um, for questions.
David's raising his hand.
Oh, I can't see you, David.
Yeah, well, just on, on, on that first technical point about not seeing us, I, I find that I can, if I have my cursor at the top of the screen and I just, you know, scroll, I mean, just, just hit the, the roller on the mouse and scan it once in a while, then I can eventually see everybody. And, you know, you as the moderator may, may, may have to do that a little more often, but it's not, you know, just a, a little twirl of the, um, of the roller and you can scan, but that's, that's up to you. Um, yeah, it, it, you know, obviously you can do, you run the meeting the way you want, but due to the awkwardness of the format, uh, do you really want to wait till the end of the presentation to ask questions? Or as we're reviewing, you know, one program, one of these issues in our budget book at a time? Can you take questions along, along the way? Because that, that's the most opportune time to pose them, rather than go back and do all of them, all the questions at once.
I'm, I'm going to go-
The suggestion is that they take breaks for, not wait for the whole program, but to take breaks in the course of his presentation and ask for questions. So I leave that decision to when he's going to take those breaks, up to him. Peter, you had your hand up?
I was just going to say, uh, in terms of the questions, another way to do it, although I think David may actually be better. We can use the chat function and simply if someone says question, then whoever, you know, we can, uh, Tony, you could monitor it that way or whoever. And the chat function also, I noted before, I think has, uh, you know, can be saved and printed out. So, you know, still be, it can still keep it as a public record.
I don't know what that is.
Um, if you go up, if you go up to the, um, to the upper right-hand corner, there's a circle with a little, uh, mark. And if you, that's the chat function.
Um, I, I'm going to ask not to do that for tonight. Um, and if I don't see your hand up, will you just speak your name or, or call my attention? And I'll, I'll, I'll recognize you. But I think we want to let John make the presentation and get some information out before we get going, before we ask him questions. All right, John?
All right, good evening. Uh, this is a special town council meeting budget workshop for April 1st, 2020. And the town manager's proposed budget for, uh, 2020 and 2021. Uh, tonight we'll be talking about general government, public safety, community services, community development, town-wide, operating transfers, park and recreation fund, we're holding till the sixteenth, that was originally scheduled for tonight. Uh, the Discovery Depot is not available yet, so we'll get to that on another night, and then other operating. And we're going to go through each one of these at a time and I'll take questions after, you know, each segment. What I'm going to do is show you the slides for that, uh, function. And then I'm going to show you the pages in the book. I can share that on the screen also. And then we can take questions. I think we'll see how that works. So first is, uh, general government, which you can find on pages one nineteen to one twenty-eight in the budget book. Uh, the highlights for the legislative branch, which is the council, there's an increase of sixteen thousand one hundred ten dollars. And mainly, most of that is for our professional and technical increase, uh, the online agenda minutes software that we've converted to is, uh, twelve thousand eight hundred a, a year. And then there's some expected, uh, printing and mailing costs for the potential referendum on the Mansfield Middle School roof project of four thousand dollars. Uh, municipal management, which is the manager's office, is a big decrease, but that reflects the, because the current year reflects the payout to the previous town manager. And there's a decrease, uh, elimination of the UConn intern program, sixteen thousand dollars. And, uh, we are proposing a shared communication specialist with the Board of Education. So that's an increase of, our share would be forty-five thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, including benefits. Uh, human resources, which is split out this year, that used to fall under municipal management. Uh, it was always shown separate, but it's, it's, it's now separate because it's a new department. Uh, there is a slight increase due to a proposed part-time senior HR specialist of thirty-four thousand seven hundred dollars, including benefits, and there's a reduction in supplies and services of twenty-eight hundred dollars. And I'll go over those pages now, so I'm going to unshare that page and share a new page. If I can find it. So this is page one nineteen in the budget book. I'll just, uh, we're talking first here, uh, up to human resources. And I just went through those increases and decreases. Now that, there's how the expenditures break out through all those subcategories, but we're only talking the first three. Legislative is again the council. I'm just going to scroll slowly through these. You can follow along in your book if you have it. And and this is where we get to the numbers. So the big increase is in the professional technical services. That's why there's a increase in the four thousand dollars for the, uh, the mailing, so total increase from last year, going from a hundred five, seven twenty to a hundred twenty-one, eight thirty. And then I'll unshare this for questions.
All right, questions? David?
Yeah, I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure what page you were on, but I, I kind of followed the gist of it.
It's one nineteen.
Yes, yes, okay. Um, checking some notes here. Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to jump. Excuse me a minute. I'm just looking at page one twenty-five. And I'm concerned about something. I don't understand it. I'm looking at the full-time equivalent. I see we had basically one person in the function of, um, oh gee, let me see. Yeah. I don't understand the communication specialist. You know, we had two people, we, we had two people, three, in, in that department. And I'm not sure what the, I've never, I have not understood what the position is about and why we're adding one full FTE and one fell swoop in, in, in that function. And, and I'll, I'll just go on to the other question if you'd like, because it was in that span of pages that, um, that Mr. Carrington was, was referring to. If we jump to page one twenty-eight, we have, um, human resources. Now, I understand we moved from one, one FTE to two because we hired a full-time, um, human resources specialist and, and raised it to a director, to a directorship. And now here we are, just a, you know, a few, going into the next fiscal year and you're adding another half, you know, point five four FTEs of part-time, um, assistants. So we, you know, kind of, kind of seems like we're growing that department. You know, we've gone, we've gone from one point zero FTEs in, in one year and then to two, when we hired a human resources director. And now it's two, another half of a part-time position. And, and I'm concerned about these two, the communication specialist on page one twenty-five and the, the half a position for, an assistant for the hu- human resources director.
Let's get an answer to your question. John or Sheri, who would, who will answer?
I can answer the first one. The, uh, communication specialist is something with our marketing program that we, you know, we all came through and said we wanted to market the town and we need a communication specialist. This, what we're going through right now, COVID-19, is showing the need for that specialized person to get out information to the public, uh, better than we're currently equipped. It would be a shared position with the schools. They have a lot of information they need to get out. And it's just something that will greatly help us, uh, get our information out to the public where, right now, that's someplace we're lacking. And that's why Board of Ed is going to pay for half it, even though it shows the full FTE there, half of that is paid for by the Board of Education.
I could just be giving a little leeway here. Do, do we really, this is basically PR, public relations. In these trying times, when we're so uncertain, we already have a large staff in town. And I, I've heard that we have about two and a half times as many full-time equivalent employees in Mansfield as does Coventry, a town with comparable year-round population. Do we really need to add basically what it amounts to in advertising a PR position?
Uh, let me, let me remind council members that, uh, what we should be doing at this point is flagging quest, flagging areas where we have questions and asking for additional information on them. And then rather than arguing the whole point, at this point, we can come back to it at the appointment after we've understood the whole budget. Um, and then we can come back and decide what we want to add or subtract. Um, but this is obviously one of those areas that needs some explanation. Ben?
Just maybe attempting to, um, to frame David's question, uh, in a way that will allow for some sort of, for that, uh, Tony. Would it be possible, John, for you to bring sort of a job description? Um, even if it's not a full job description to a future meeting, so we can take a look at this position? And, um, obviously we'll have to decide as a council when it comes time to adopt the budget, whether we would like to add this communications position or not. But- But, um, maybe that would be a good way to get more information so we can, um, we can understand and make a determination ourselves, rather than arguing the point now.
Mr. Fuhrman?
Please, yeah, thank you. Look, the sta, the position was described on page 21, where, where, where staff did a great, pretty good job in, in including and giving a brief description of these new positions. So while I thank Ben for his comment, I don't need more information. And I just want to cut to the chase here. This isn't, I, I've seen this happen year after year, that people, you know, raise a question about something and you're just flagging it. I don't need anything flagged, I don't need any more information, the information is there, I've absorbed it. And I've made my point that we keep growing government, we're expanding positions, creating new ones. This is basically a PR position. And if you don't want to, at this point, this is almost like a test case. And I, you know, I'm not going to belabor the point and be, be obstructionist and keep, uh, bringing this up every time. If we don't want to have a serious discussion at some point, and I've always been told during the year, well, we can bring this up at budget season, but the budget season comes along and we're told, oh, we can flag it and get more information, and that's just a way of not discussing it. And then to say we're going to bring it up at the end of April, when we're, when we're going to adopt the whole budget, by then, the moment has passed, you can't go over 600 line items and start arguing every point all over again. We, to, to my colleagues, I say with all due respect, we either want to have a, a serious discussion about the scope of government, is there ever a point where we say enough? Especially at this point, at any point would have been appropriate over the past few years. Here we are, expanding. We never talk about cutting, we never talk about limiting. I respect the town manager and his introductory comments in this very finely-written budget book, where he says, and it's always every year, it's the same thing, we're going to maintain all the programs. And I ask myself a rhetorical question, why are we maintaining all the pro, the policy is to maintain all current services? Well, unless the council says otherwise, management can be, it, it, it's understood that management will want to maintain everything the way it is. Here we're maintaining and we're expanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't want to have a discussion on it, then we don't have to have one, but this is what we have to do.
We will have the discussion about new positions when we do the final decision-making on the budget. And then Sam.
Yeah, I, if we're going to, I mean, I understand David's point about the need to want to have a central discussion, but we can't do it ad hoc, and first of all, it's technically not really on the agenda. But also, if, we won't, we need to plan that discussion, and it can't be at the start of when we talk about these particular, you know, these line items. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense, because we, you know, we have a lot of line items to go through, and everything is a trade-off, so I think we need to hear a lot more. But also, we, it, we, if, if we're going to have, if all of us, or even half of us do this on many of these items, it'll take twice as much time as it already does. I think for both efficiency and, um, as well as being able to understand the entire picture better, that we need to wait as we have done.
Okay, Sam and then Ben.
Just, uh, be brief, um, I, I agree with, uh, David, uh, fellow counselor's position about, you know, having a discussion about the size of government and, and things like that. I, I also wanted to ask, hadn't we also talked about cutting the assistant town manager's position? I don't know if that's been made permanent, or if that was just an agreement that we've had with our current interim town manager, but, um, I know that we've had discussion of, uh, reducing the size of government in the past. But maybe that's, uh, a discussion that, based on what you guys are saying, we should do later on.
Um, I believe that if you look at the position count in the town manager's office, that position is being left vacant. If you look on page 125 and you look at the position count, there is no position for an assistant town manager. Ben?
Thanks, thanks, I. Yeah, no, just, just for the, I just want to sort of lay out what I understand the budget process to be and why I think it's important we have these meetings the way that we have them, rather than sort of debating each item in the budget and that debate and vote and make decisions as we go through line by line. We have a large and complicated budget, and our process is that our town manager presents his budget, his recommendation to us, the council, through a series of budget workshops, where we go through his budget, department by department, position by position, et cetera, et cetera. Then, we, as a council, debate and adjust that budget. We accept some of his recommendations, we reject them, we do some of our own. And that's why it's important that we go through what he's proposing in detail and talk about each item, understand it, ask for follow-up information, et cetera. I appreciate David's point that in the past, sometimes, the last few years especially, our budget adoption debates and meetings have been relatively brief, that it's, at times, both parties have shown up with proposals, and they've been voted on, and a budget has passed, and so maybe we need to expand that portion of it. But these workshops are for us to gain an understanding of what the town manager is proposing, to talk to our department heads about why various things are being proposed, and understand what they're going for, rather than have a debate about the role and size of government in each line item and department. So I, I appreciate that conversation as it relates to a communication specialist in the town manager's office. But I think, for me, the process is really important, uh, and the process of, of getting a presentation about the manager's full budget in detail without having a philosophical debate about each department's role and function and, and their requests for the next fiscal year as we go. So that's my opinion, that's how I understand this process is set up.
Sherry?
Um, although I, I appreciate what, uh, Ben has said, I'd have to mirror with and agree with David that, uh, it, it is important that we go through these things line by line. I believe we have a responsibility to our constituents, to the people in this town, to be fiscally responsible.
Uh, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Sherry. We will go through the budget line by line, and at the end of the, after we have learned the whole budget, we will decide what we want to cut and what we want to save. Um, that's the way, we will determine our budget at the end of the presentation of the town manager's budget. Um, Terry? You need to unmute yourself.
I had the wrong mouse. Yeah, just, and I so appreciate this process and the time and effort that staff had put into this, understanding entirely that this is not the place for a policy discussion. But if we have questions, and as David's excellent question of why, which, what, and then John responded explaining, and that's the end of it. Uh, then later on, we can have a ne- necessary policy discussion. But for now, it's just, if we, we don't understand something, we can ask for clarification, but it's not a policy discussion at this point.
Uh, any other questions? David?
I just want to correct a comment made, you know, a little, it was what Ben said and a few others. Yes, I mentioned the role of government, size of government, that was more of a general point I threw in. My main point is, here we are discussing a, a position. And I'm saying, this is a test case. Why in this time do we need a communication specialist if we've gone by? And, and, and Mr. Carrington explained it, oh, we know we're doing branding and all this. I say, okay, that's great, that's not as critical to me as, as fixing potholes and, 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 you know, paying our schoolteachers, it's just something so critical. And I'm always told, oh, we can always have that discussion later, but we never do. And I want to assure my colleagues, I won't hold my breath, maybe you'll surprise me, but I won't hold my breath to have any of my, my friends on the Democratic side of the aisle decide to have a serious discussion about these positions that keep growing, keep proliferating. If we can't have a dis, if, and if you want to have a policy discussion sometime, if you don't want to do it now, uh, again, I won't hold my breath, but I, I would welcome that discussion at any time. Yes, I've heard this before, I've heard this over many years. We'll discuss that when we adopt the budget. You know, when we come in to adopt the budget, it's a long enough evening already, it's almost impractical to, to be going over all these programs again. Theoretically, you can, but at some point, somebody's going to just, it's going to get too late, somebody's going to call the question, and, and that's the end of it. And that's what happens every time. If you don't want to discuss.
I would strongly recommend that you take very careful notes of everything you want cut from the budget. So when it comes time for this discussion, you will have a proposal that is detailed to make to the council.
I'm on record now, I'm on record now as saying that this communication specialist and, and this, um, human resource assistant is something I'd like to cut. But I'm, 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 don't want to be the person who always brings this stuff up, and it's always rejected in the vote. I've said it now, if any of my, if any of the members of the reigning super-majority party choose to bring it up later, so we're not, we in the minority party are just left, left hanging and being overruled, I'll wait for one of you guys, maybe, to bring it up. You know I'm on record as these two part-time positions are something we could probably do without. Thank you very much.
Um, let me tell you my interest in this communication position. When we first began to shut down government and talk about how Mansfield would respond to, uh, COVID-19, I spent some on, like, some time online with WHO, the World Health Organization, to see what their recommendations were for towns and for, for governments. And the first thing they said was, what, what any government needs to do is to be in direct, frequent, honest, clear communication with, with residents. It has to be regular, it has to be, uh, widespread. And at that time, we had not done anything along these lines. My very first meeting with emergency management, that was what my very first recommendation was that we put something on the town website that, uh, gives access to information, and what there is on the town website comes out of that. At the moment, the person who was doing that work is Tasha. Now, in addition, the library is doing some things online, uh, the community center is doing something online, but we, but the, and, and the schools are doing a great deal online. However, uh, I do believe that we do need somebody who can provide, uh, in-depth, regular communication to the public, particularly in this time. Um, but I also have a couple of questions I'd like to ask that, that aren't related to this. Okay, Terry, go ahead first.
With all due respect to Councilman Fuhrman and to the mayor, I really don't think we can go line by line, having a policy debate. Uh, and though I appreciate both of your views, and I take them both very seriously, I, I, I really think that we'll never get through this unless we listen to the staff, let them explain what they want to do, and then later on, have this conversation.
Okay, I have two questions regarding the budget itself. Um, what happened to the internship program?
Well, we had an internship this year, and because I'm not a seasoned manager, I didn't get to u- utilize him in a good way, and we just thought it was prudent at this time. And that, I didn't get to address the human resources position. And we used to have an assistant town manager who was basically the HR director. And we had, uh, under the last regime, we had Michael, uh, La Rochelle, so they had two FTEs plus the intern. So they probably had about a 2.3, uh, intern, uh, FTE office. So we're really just replacing the intern with a more professional person. And it, if you come in this office, you always see the HR is busy from the minute they get in, an hour early all the time, to the minute they leave, usually five o'clock, which is a half hour later every day. And I'm trying to split the office also here, where they're not part of the town manager's office. I won't, I'm, I have a plan to try to build a wall, may not get there, but they should not be coming in and answering the public's questions, they're HR, they're not the town manager's office. That's where this other public relations person would help redundancy with Tasha. We would have two people in the town manager's office. One, their duty would be this public relations communication specialist, and the other would be Tasha, the executive assistant, and HR would be a separate function. They're no longer part of the manager's office.
Um, yeah, and I have another unrelated question. Um, you have an additional cost to the legislative branch, and it says it's software. It's going on, to, uh, paperless, um, conduct of business that costs us more than doing with paper?
It's the iCompass program that we use with planning and zoning, and, you know, if, if we ever get to the point where we can do electronic, you know, using laptops at the council, like the planning zoning does, it just, it makes life a lot easier. Tasha used to spend, I think, all of Thursday getting the packets together. Now, with this program, it cuts that time, like, down to like an hour. It's ea, it's, it's just, we went from the 19th century to the 21st century.
But it's going to cost us more?
It's well worth the $14,000.
Um, yes, if I can just add to that, it might be costing more for the software, but the amount of staff time we're saving is just tremendous, absolutely tremendous. If I can add just one thing on the HR specialist as well, um, the thought there was that we are going to be going into a major system conversion, and it was much more beneficial to have a seasoned HR person to help us through that conversion than an internship. So that's where the scales there was, okay, do we stick with the internship? Or do we try to, um, bring on this part-time HR person? And we really need the HR position to get through this system conversion.
Peter?
Very briefly, I thought we hired a very fine HR person.
I called on Peter, I thought I was answering.
I called on me, I'm sorry.
No, Peter.
Uh, thanks. Uh, Sherry, is it, this would be a permanent position, or is any thinking of this as a one-year position?
I think, um, we'd need to see how that goes. I, um, I think at this point, we start with one year, and then, and then we look at it. But like I say, I think that would also be up to the, the permanent town manager. This is John's recommendation at this point, and I completely support it in terms of what we need to do to, um, to get this department up and running. We have a brand-new HR director, um, we have a new HR assistant. There's a lot of work in there.
And currently, we have, we have two, 2.5 FTEs, we have Audrey also working. So right now, your HR department has what I'm asking for.
Okay, David, do you have something to add?
Well, I, I was, I was just making the comment that we have an HR specialist full-time, a person that came to us with great credentials as the new, uh, HR person, and it was raised to the level of, uh, directorship with all the, you know, talents and, uh, extra abilities that are attached to such a, you know, to a raise in the status of, of that function. I, I thought that that person would be able to handle that, i- the integration of the system that, that Sherry mentioned. Again, I don't, I, I, I'm looking at the, at the description here, we're sharing it with Board of Ed, and it doesn't say anything about integrating a new system, I appreciate Sherry's explanation. But is this something we absolutely need? Is that not something our existing staff, with help from IT, if it involves integrating a new system? I don't know if it's, uh, computer-related, it probably is. Is our HR director able to, to do that function? It's a full-time, we just hired this person as a full-time position.
David, I wouldn't bring this to you if I didn't think it was necessary.
I, I have one other question, too. I'm reading the goals, uh, the goals are out of date in many cases. Um, I, I don't know whether you just lifted them from last year. Um, I know that you guys have been really under stress and very busy, so I'm not sure this is something I really want to emphasize. But it might be useful to include in the goals some discussion about recovery from COVID as we look, as we go down the road. I mean, clearly, there's going to be, it's going to be different next year if and when we're back to normal. Um, have you thought about that at all, Sherry and John?
These are really based on your goals, so until you, this is the legislative department and goals, so, um, those need to be updated after you, you set your goals. Um, but certainly, we can also look to update the municipal management goals based on what has happened. Um, keep in mind, this budget, especially the narrative pieces, were, were developed and were written in January. were developed and were written in January, February.
Right. Okay, any other questions on this section of the budget? All right, John, proceed, next section.
Okay, you're going to share my screen again. So the next section is the town attorney. There's no change, we're keeping the same town attorney and same human resource attorney. Probate court, there was a decrease of $580. We're in court with Coventry, Towne and Wellington. It's a pro-rated share. Town clerk's office has an increase of $9,210. That's mainly contracted salary adjustments, steps in general wage increase. There's an increase for mandated advertising and a reduction in annual software costs of $3,400. And in general elections, there's an increase for election workers based on November 2020 election.
Questions, Ron?
Is there any mandate or standard procedure in terms of bidding on attorneys and other professional consultants?
Yeah, if you recall, a couple of meetings ago, we, the council voted to extend it for a year. So when you had a new permanent manager, you would go out for a new town attorney.
Okay. And price then remains as previously.
Kevin has agreed to keep the same, or his firm has agreed to keep the same price.
Thanks.
I was going to share the book if we want to share the book, Tony. It's up to you on the screen.
It's up to everybody else. Do you guys want to see the detail from the book? I'm working on two computers so I can get to it. Ben?
It, just what it looks like on my screen when John shares it, it's not particularly legible. So I think the PowerPoint is fine and we can follow along in the book, just like we do during a normal council meeting. Certainly, when you shared it last section, I couldn't see what you were scrolling through or anything.
Okay. No questions?
David?
Yeah, as Ben said, I'm comfortable too following it in the book. Just please give me the page reference as you move along because I, otherwise I can't follow it.
Will do. It's right on top of this. So looking at the rest of general government highlights, pages 136 to 141. Finance does an increase of $43,620. This includes the revenue collector assessor, central services and shared financial services. Because of contracted salary adjustments, steps in general wage increase, that's a $10,000, almost $10,650 increase. The shared finance increase, which will be discussed with the Board of Ed on the 22nd, of $20,110. And the appraisal software increase of $8,020. And in information technology, which we'll also discuss on the shared services on the 22nd, there's an increase of $5,798.
Questions? David? David, unmute yourself, please.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
I mean, I could mute you, that would be, that wouldn't be fair though.
Okay. I'm following along and it's all pretty self-explanatory and I have no, no quibble with this. I'm just looking at the summary of the Department of Finance that's on page 140. You know, showing the salaries, benefits, all that stuff. And then further down the page, on page 140, it shows the positions. And that's just for the collector and assessor's offices. There's some point later in the presentation where we're getting to the, you know, the rest of the finance department, you know, Sherry and Alicia and everybody. This is just, the positions shown here are just the three each in the revenue, collector of revenue and assessor's office respectively, or the rest.
Tony?
Yes, Sherry, go ahead.
Yes, David, absolutely. We have another chart very similar to this in the management services fund. And when we discuss that, we'll discuss all the shared finance department. This is sort of the standalone finance people. If you look at the professional technical services line, that's where the town's share of the shared services cost is. But all the detail will be provided when we talk about the management services fund. And we'll have the same type of chart with staffing.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, John, do you want to proceed?
Yep, going to share the screen again.
Actually, John, I have one question about the registrar of voters. We've been very concerned about the primary and the general election. The primary's been postponed to June. And there's talk about having, expanding opportunities for write-ins. Does any of that lead to a consideration of additional costs?
I'm sure it does, I haven't, we'll have to get back to you on that.
If I can jump in, the budget, when we developed it, was before all of this happened again. So this anticipated elections and additional election workers. So I'm sure that as things change, the registrars, along with the town clerk and Sarah Ann, I don't know if you have anything to add, but I'm sure would be looking to rework and possibly reallocate some of these monies, where we may not need as many election workers, but we might need something else.
Okay. Sarah Ann, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I don't have anything to add unless there's a specific question.
The question was about the, would, would the delay in the primary or the move to more write-in ballots produce additional costs for registrar voters?
When you say write-in, you're talking about absentee ballots?
Yes, yes, sorry.
So there would certainly be an increase workload on existing staff in the clerk's office to administer, you know, additional ballots in the absentee balloting program. As far as the counting end, you know, we administer the whole program and the registrars count the votes. If they've got machines, they're feeding them through the machine. So they may need, you know, an additional worker or two or three, depending on how many there are, to count all those ballots. But I would not anticipate an increase in absentee ballots to cause a major fluctuation in our budget numbers.
Okay, how about EDR that, that day, I view those days. Does this budget reflect an anticipated very large number of EDRs?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, those are my questions, anybody else? Ben, I don't see you, are you still here?
I am.
Okay, good.
All right, sharing the screen again. So now we're on to public safety highlights, which are, you can find on pages 142 to 149. For police services, we're going to see a decrease of $27,520. In their budget, they're proposing an additional seven hours per week to increase the admin assistant. And that's for roughly $15,000. School resource officers are in the budget with the revenue offset. There's a net increase of $101,000 for the state troopers. This reflects.
Decrease, increase.
Decrease, did I say increase, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It reflects the current year adjustment for unfunded liability, states absorbing 50%. It reflects an increase of 10.8% for the same number of troopers. And we have to increase our overtime because we lost the underage drinking grant for $56,000. And there's an increase for some traffic display units, $11,270. And animal control, the only increases are due to contractual salary adjustments. And my lights just went out. That's never happened before. Steps in general wage increase and salary adjustments for animal control. So I'm going to unshare the screen.
Questions? David?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things. I studied this police services very closely and I had two points. One, one having to do with the administrative assistant. I read the issue paper on 21 and also on page 23. People are wondering where my references come from. I understand we're increasing an administrative assistant from 28 to 35 hours. And the reason given for that is expanded calls for service. Something about that didn't quite ring with me because, you know, when people call for service, they call 911 and that goes to a dispatcher. So, you know, it doesn't go to the clerical person in the town, in the town hall. It goes to 911, wherever the dispatcher is. So that's an issue. The other thing is, in the issue paper on page 23, I understand that police services is going to cost us an extra $156,000, $156.70. And I'm just going to recommend that we just reduce the number of troopers from eight to seven. You know, and to make up for that. See if life will continue in Mansfield with seven resident state troopers instead of eight. And again, this is a point. I don't know that you want to discuss specific line items. This is, this could be an example. If any of my colleagues want to have that discussion now, I don't think you do, then we won't. But I'm on record now as that's being my recommendation. I'd like to hear on most of those issues from the town manager.
David, a moment of clarification, please. According to the PowerPoint we just looked at, there is a decrease in police services of $27,520. I don't, Sherry, can you explain the difference between the two sets of numbers David gave and what's in front of us?
Yes, there's a reason the issue paper is in there. As you know, they are overall showing a reduction. But we are seeing in the, in the cost from the current year of $156,000. So what happened was, when we did the 1920 budget, we didn't know that the state was going to pull back and absorb 50% of the accrued liability for benefits. So the benefit rate that we budgeted for was over 100% and we were only charged 84%. So what I would have expected to see was a much larger decrease than what we're actually seeing. And this is because when the police contract was negotiated, additional payments were, they had a general wage increase as well as a payment, from what we understand, a payment for one half an hour of lunchtime for all of the troopers per day. So what happened was, that increase offset a lot of the reduction that we had from the reduced overtime rate. So that's why I felt it was important to put the issue paper in to explain what was going up and what was going down. Because it is, it is a decrease overall of $27,000. But when you compare the overtime, I'm sorry, not the overtime, the overall cost of the troopers themselves, there's actually an increase over the current year.
Okay, clearly, that's something that we need to flag for future discussions. David?
Mayor, I appreciate your saying we need to flag it. I'm not, that's great, but I'm not asking for it to be flagged. I understood the issue, I understand the issue and Terry explained it even further. And I understood the issue paper too, it's very well-written. I'm saying if it's costing us more money, to me, this is one response. We cut by one, by one resident state trooper instead of having to cough up more money.
That's why I would like it flagged. I would like that discussion to be held for sure at the end of our, when we go to discuss our budget.
Very well, I'm glad to be able to have that discussion.
Questions? All right, John, on to the next one.
Okay, you're going to share my screen again. So now we're into the fire prevention, emergency management and fire and emergency services. Public safety highlights on pages 150 through 160. Fire prevention has an increase of $4,210. Most of that is from replacement repair of fire hydrants. Emergency management has a slight decrease of $370. And fire emergency services has an increase of $199, $840. Most of that is contracted salary excluding benefit adjustments, which is $216, $340. It's a full year with two new firefighters that we didn't have last year and a wage increase for $133,630 and an overtime increase of $83,080. And other services and supplies were reduced by $16,500.
Questions from council members, Ben?
Can you explain the increase in overtime? I thought we had added positions and switched our scheduling method around so that we could reduce overtime this year.
I can do that, but I'm going to let Fran start with it. Got to unmute yourself, Fran. Can't hear you, Fran.
It looks like you're on, but we can't hear you. On the phone, are you caller two by any chance?
No, he's got an audio pin, you got to enter an audio pin, Fran. Got to enter 931 pound signs. Fran, why don't you disconnect and come back in, not using the web, use the right side. Sherry, go ahead while Fran's doing it.
Yeah, I could just give you a little, an overview and then Fran can, once he gets on, give you more details. But this is part of the contract that was negotiated that the full-timers need to be offered the overtime before we can fill a shift with a part-timer. This is part of the contract that was negotiated by our former town manager. And so consequently, we are now increasing our overtime costs because the full-timers are filling shifts that in the past, we were trying to fill with part-timers.
Another sign of a backfired labor negotiation?
Yes, this goes back to negotiations.
Okay, Ben, your hand's up?
Just, I'm wondering, Charlie, can you unmute, can you mute yourself? They're getting a lot of noise from you, I think. I'm just, hopefully Fran is here now to just explain that a little bit, in a little bit more detail. And I think I understand what you said, Sherry, but let's see if we got Fran.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
All right, thanks, sorry. I think I was on so long and not talking that it cut me out, so I'm back on. Yeah, the overtime is directly related to the contractual agreement that allowed, we used to be able to use a part-timer to fill a full-timer vacancy. That was negotiated out of the last contract by the past town manager and assistant town manager. And so we're now in a position, when a firefighter takes the day off, a full-timer, we have to fill that with a full-time firefighter. We still are seeing savings by doing that 5-4 schedule. So in other words, when the first firefighter takes a vacation day, we are not filling that position. Otherwise, the. Otherwise, these numbers would probably be worse. But that is the main, the main driver of that overtime, as well as some increases in wages that implemented that.
Any other questions? Okay.
So we'll move on?
Yes, move on.
Sharing the screen again. So now we're into Community Services Highlights. This is on pages 173 to 179, so we skipped some pages in the book that we'll get to next time. Health Regulations and Inspections increased by $7,880. That's based on our member's share with the Eastern Island Health District. Human Services, an increase of $42,990. That's for contracted salary adjustments and a full year with a new social worker. And we also want to do some staff reorganization, which would create a net cost of $32,240. And the reorganization would be a part-time outreach social worker is replaced with a full-time outreach coordinator. And a part-time senior center assistant position would be eliminated. And we would increase the early childhood services coordinator to a full-time position, a five-hour-per-week increase. I'm gonna unshare.
Questions from council members? Mr. Osberger, Charlie? Unmute yourself, please. There we go.
Yeah, come on. Okay. John, I had some questions about the social services overall. I know there are a bunch of programs that were prevalent in the past that were eliminated, and I'm not sure if you know about them or anything. I know that there was a Thursday afternoon Dr. Haney program, and then there was something that carried on that went into the high school. And I understand that those have been recently eliminated, and I'm just curious why that would be. And I can tell you, from personal experience, having had my daughter, being involved in those programs, I needed special services, being in special needs, just how incredibly important they were and how very well-attended they were. And I know that they were a lifeblood to a lot of families, and to try to understand why they would just all of a sudden have been eliminated baffles me to no end.
Question, I do, is that something you can answer?
I can. Actually, the funds for that are still in the budget. It's just being delivered in a different way. And, you know, it just has to do with, quite frankly, the need and then certain liability issues around that treatment modality. So we are using, we have more providers here in town, and people are, you know, going to other providers, as well as, we still do have the ability, though, to contract with our consulting psychiatrist. So it's just being done in a different modality at this point. So it's not gone, it's just different.
And it was changed, not with this coming budget, it's been changed a while.
Right.
Yeah. It's just that, I'm hearing it from a different position, partly from the people that were still involved with it. And they're kinda dumbfounded as to the way that this is, and I can tell you from absolute firsthand experience, just that the way that the program was structured, that it was an absolute lifeblood. People have very busy lives, and within their busy lives, this afforded an opportunity to create some sanity. And so, I don't know, I would have to see some more about these, about what you've described, to understand it a little bit better. Because I know that the structure of how we, both of those programs were developed, and particularly the one that was the Dr. Haney Group within Youth Services, was just an absolute necessity, from what I could see.
Yeah, the participants really aged out of the program, and many of the new clients that we had preferred a different modality. So, but again, the funds are still there, it's just being offered in a different way. It had changed a while ago in the high school to be one-on-one visits, anyway. They hadn't had a group there for a number of years. And so that's kind of what happened.
So could you describe what the modality shift is, Pat, just so we can understand it?
Yes. Originally, they did, they treated, they met with the family, all the families and the kids at the same time in the group, and they discussed medications and support. Now, it's being handled differently in the sense that it's more meeting with the parent and the child individually versus the group experience. So, which, quite frankly, that's been more of a request from families for that type of treatment. And again, originally, we didn't have the number of providers, private providers, in town that we do now. So there are a number of private providers, and oftentimes, families prefer to go to a private provider. So it's not that we don't have it available, it's just being done in a different way.
Okay, Sherry, then Sam, then David.
All right, thank you.
Sherry, unmute.
Thanks. Pat, I'm hoping you can give us just a narrative on the changes. So we're going from a part-time outreach social worker to a full-time outreach coordinator. What's the difference between the two roles? And what's the, what's the price differential there? And also, if you could explain eliminating the part-time senior center assistant?
So this is, it's actually a restructuring. We have, when I first started here, six years, a little over six years ago, the outreach social work position, the social work position had been vacant for some times. They've had, had had a real problem getting someone willing to take that part-time position and stay. I restructured it to some extent, and we've had people in the position. But again, we have been losing, we had really good people in the position who then we lose to full-time positions. It's really, really difficult to keep some, a professional person in a, in a part-time, non-benefited position, quite frankly. And that, that role takes a while to grow into, to, because it requires visibility in the community, there's a big learning curve when someone starts. It takes a while for people to trust that, you know, that individual. And a lot of uplearning and supervision and training that the town invests in. And so it's pretty costly, not only because it, we keep having to rehire, but, and send through training, but we very rarely get to fully utilize that person before they're trained and move on. So, and this is, you know, so it's, it's also, has to do with some of the challenges we've had with transportation. What we have found, and what the supervisor and myself suggest, is to combine coordinating the transportation role along with the social work role, so you'll have a coordinator that works with both. Many of the people who use that transportation service also have other needs. So, and quite frankly, probably the biggest cost in that, it would be making it full-time so that you would need to pay benefits. So I would say that that's probably the biggest chunk of, of that increase in the salary. And the, the program assistant type role would be moving into, currently, we have a transportation and program assistant. So the senior center assistant and the program assistant role would be combined into one role, and then the outreach coordinator would be in another. So you're not adding hours, what you're doing is kind of making the position more appealing so we can recruit, attract, and keep someone in that position.
Pat, just for clarification, what is a full-time outreach coordinator, though? Is it, what, is it a licensed position? Is it a bachelor's level position? What kind of training are they, what is their role gonna be?
So it's a bachelor's level position, so they would not be doing any clinical work. They'd be doing resource coordination, case management. They'd definitely be working on volunteer recruitment and, and coordination for the transportation program, as well as helping people access transportation and doing some advocacy and case management with people who don't necessarily need our volunteer program but are having a hard time accessing those. That position also does some programming, they, you know, related in the area, they've been running an aging mastery course. They do mutual self-help support groups, which are not clinical, like the caregiver support group, and the low-vision group. I don't know if that offers any clarification, but it's a non-licensed position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being recognized, Mayor, and thank you, Pat, for that explanation. The elimination of the part-time senior center assistant was a question I had, and so I just wanna make sure that some of that functionality, some of the responsibilities can be folded into this new full-time position?
So, a current position we have now will be changed from the transportation and program assistant, and that, that other part will be absorbed into that position as just a program assistant. And then the transportation portion will be given to the outreach coordinator.
Okay, that's helpful.
So that's why it's a restructuring.
And then, just building off of what my other colleague, Councilor Osberger, had mentioned, and you had, I think, described, the transition from the Mansfield School System to the E.O. Smith School System, that program is still in place, it's just, it's manifested itself in a more one-on-one-type manner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
David?
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mayor. Pat, a quick question, and then I have some follow-up questions.
Sure.
Last year, you and Samin Patwa asked for an additional social worker to help with, you know, the outreach, or whatever you, however you termed it, to help with families that needed a lot of one-on-one assistance. Was that the outreach social worker position that we're now talking about?
No.
Upgrading to full-time?
No, no, that, that was, that one is associated with the one that we're talking about, making a full-time position by combining two roles, is attached to the senior center. The one you're talking about is in youth services. And that, that was last year.
Okay, that, thank you for that answer. I'd just like to say, this is a department that does wonderful things, helps people, which is a, which is a great function of government, to help people, rather than harass them, as I think another department sometimes does. And I just wanna point out, I did mention, I tried to be diplomatic last year, I'll try to be diplomatic this year. I use the term "mission creep." You know, this department has 12 and a half full-time equivalent positions. I know this isn't the time, according to my colleagues, to discuss, and the policy, and the role of government, or the role of a particular program. Maybe my colleagues will, in the supermajority party, will wanna have that discussion. Now, we have four positions in the area of youth services, two, two youth services, social workers, one youth service supervisor, and one early childhood service coordinator. This may all be fine and dandy, and maybe it's something we should do. I'm just saying we're a small town, if my colleagues are so inclined, we should have a discussion about that sometime, if you so, if you so wish. Because this is, this is all very humanistic, and I'm all about trying to help people. But I'm just saying, this is a big and growing program, and now we're growing it some more. I did have a second point I'd like to raise. On page 184 of our budget book, it's a summary of how we are, not a summary, a good, very good detail, and very nicely written and presented, of department grants to area agencies. I was gonna make, I was gonna make a suggestion. Again, I know you don't want to make decisions here, and you don't wanna have these policy decisions.
That's my next slide.
Pardon me?
That's my next slide, I haven't covered that yet.
Oh, well, I can, I can make the point now or later, as you wish. I will hold it.
Hold it for that. Okay.
I'd like to comment, after Mr. Carrington, I'd like to discuss that allocation of the grants to area agencies, if I could be recognized then as a continuation after Mr. Carrington makes his, gets to that part of the presentation. Thank you.
I'm sure you're not the only one on that one. I have, or John, or Sherry, I don't know who, I have a request. On page 179, the positions in human services are all lumped together. It would be very helpful if they could be separated by senior services, adult services, and youth services. I find it very confusing to figure out who's working at the senior center and who's working in youth services.
Yeah, sure, we can do that.
Thank you. Any other questions on human services? All right, John, proceed to the next slide.
I'm gonna share the screen again. Now we're on Community Services Highlights, page 180 to 184. Library Services first is an increase of $79,570. And this reflects the move of Library Express Desk Attendance, Library in Charge, Programming and Materials to the library budget. This was previously funded by a general fund transfer to the Transit Services Fund, and that's a $64,240 adjustment. There's some contracted salary adjustments, and there's an increase to restore material and equipment funding of $7,700. And then the Grants to Area Agencies is showing an increase of $3,500. Access Agency is 1,000. Community Companions and Homemakers, 1,000. Perception Programs, 3,000. United Services, 3,000 reduction, and Wyndham Area No Freeze, 1,500. I know that's not all of the ones listed, but those were the highlights for the increase.
Questions from councilors? I know, David, you reserved the space here, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Mayor, may I just jump in very quickly? Sorry, this isn't a question. I just, this is my annual part of the budget where I tell everyone that I work for the Connecticut Community Nonprofit Alliance, and that many of the agencies that we provide grants to are members of my organization, and that I don't have a technical conflict of interest, because I don't financially benefit from any of this. But I choose to recuse myself while we talk about the grants to local agencies, so I will do that now.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, David?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just have a, something on page 184, which is the allocation of the grants to area agencies. I was going to suggest, again, I don't know that you want, you know, I have a feeling you don't wanna entertain motions, so I won't try to do that. At some point, if my colleagues wish to have that discussion, they can bring it up. I don't wanna be just the lone person bringing it up and have everything I bring up shot down. But I was gonna suggest that, that three, I'm focusing on two lines, all kind of at the bottom of that area, the area, bottom of that block. There's Veteran Services, which is kind of the third from the bottom, and then there's Wyndham Area No Freeze Project. I was gonna suggest that $3,000 be reduced from the Veteran Services and instead be transferred, given instead, that would reduce them from $10,000 to $7,000. And then we would increase the Wyndham Area No Freeze Project from $1,500 to $4,500. So there's no change in the total amount, in the aggregate, just an allocation. My rationale for that... My rationale for that, if I can be maybe permitted, is that I, I have a lot of res- I, I put on a slightly higher level, uh, a, a service, an agency, uh, you know, a helpful organization that provides help to somebody on the spot. You know, they're hungry, they need a place to sleep, you know, that they're right there. And that's what the No-Freeze Shelter is about. Veteran Services, I'm sure they do good work, but it's always about, you know, come into our office during our hours, and somebody's gonna help you and tell you what phone numbers you can try, and what websites you can go to, and, and what forms you can get and try to fill out, and give you referrals, et cetera, et cetera. I just think this is, um, I'm, I'm more about helping somebody who has a crisis, on the spot, needs help now. So I would urge a transfer, you know, three thousand dollars from the Veterans Services to the No-Freeze Shelter. Again, if my colleagues in the majority party, who control everything, if they would care to bring that up and entertain that, we could, uh, bring that up at the time that my, uh, the majority party feels is appropriate. I know you don't wanna make any changes now, but this is something I'm putting on the table. Consider it as if it were a motion. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Um, let's flag that one. Um, anybody else have a comment?
Don't need it flagged, I understand it very well.
Uh, yes, but we'll come, I don't wanna forget it, David. If it's not flagged, we might forget it. The purpose of the flagging is we don't forget to come back to it. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak, ask questions, or speak on this? I'm not seeing everybody, so... Okay, no questions. Um, I'm inclined to agree with David on this one. Uh, John, you wanna go with the next one?
Yes. The next one, the community development highlights, uh, building and house, uh, pages one-eighty-five to one-ninety-three. A building and housing inspection has an increase of fourteen thousand, three-hundred-and-forty dollars. This is a reorganization impact from the current year. That was done by the, uh, previous, or former town manager, former assistant town manager. Uh, also contracted salary adjustments, and there's no other major changes. Planning and development has an increase of fifteen thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And again, it's contracted salary adjustments, offset by the current year reorganization from the, uh, former town manager and assistant town manager. Uh, there's an increase for reimbursable consultants, fifteen thousand dollars, which will have a revenue offset, and an increase for economic development services of ten thousand, five-hundred. And under boards and commission, there's no change.
Council members have questions? David?
Again, thank you very much, Mayor. I don't have a question so much, it's just a comment. Uh, I, I respect Mr. Carrington's pointing out accurately about the seemingly slight increase in, um, building and housing inspection. But if we, if we look at their total expenditures for, for budget year twenty-nineteen, it was three-hundred-and-sixty-one-and-a-half thousand dollars. And now we're going up to four-hundred-and-forty-three-and-a-half thousand dollars in the proposed budget. That means over a course of, uh, just two years, it's, it's gone up twenty-three percent. Just saying. If my counselor, if our counselors think, my fellow counselors in the omnipotent reigning party think that, uh, you know, Department of Inspection, uh, close to six full-time equivalent employees is, is called for, but this is, you know, almost a half a million-dollar program. When you, you know, and that, 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 those numbers don't include the, uh, employee benefits. That's listed a few, a couple of lines down. So it's really even more than the four-forty-three-and-a-half. It's a big department. And, uh, you know, you've heard me talk about some of the functions of that department in the past, and I'm in the process now of en- engaging it, uh, you know, trying to gather information. And that, that, that's a burgeoning, burgeoning program, you know, uh, compared to many others. And, um, that's a big increase when you look at it over the span of just, uh, just two budget cycles. Twenty-three percent. Thank you.
David, I think you have suggested what I've been looking for ever since I became mayor, and that's a new honorific. I think I will call myself your omnipotency. Um, um, Mike, can you explain the reorganization that took place? I'm assuming that some of this increase has something to do with that.
Yeah, I, I believe that that is the case. Uh, if you recall, we had a reorganization under the previous town manager, uh, for some of the zoning enforcement duties. Came down, uh, under my purview, uh, in, in working in concert with Linda Painter and, and her folks. So I think the money that you see the changes there, that, that is the, the vast majority of, of where that came from.
Ben?
Can I ask it in a, in a slightly more direct way? Am I to understand your answer, Mike, to mean that while funds have risen in your department due to that reorganization, those positions were moved from somewhere else, therefore funds were reduced in another department?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but that is my understanding.
Sherry, can you answer that?
Yes, that's correct. There were, there were costs that were reflected in, in planning that have been moved to building.
Thank you.
Any other questions? David? All right, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I haven't seen costs reduced in any other departments, although I, I take, uh, Mike and Sherry's comments, uh, as truthful, but, uh, still, that's a big increase. And I haven't seen other departments reduced. May, maybe something was transferred, but still, this is a big increase. And that's a lot of FTEs. And, you know, you've heard me opine on this, uh, on the function of this department, and what a lot, but an ever-growing part of their effort is involved in. Um, and it doesn't have to do with just, um, in, inspecting new construction to see if it complies with the Building Code and issuing occupancy permits. It's grown to something much, much, much beyond. And, um, I'll leave it at that.
Ben?
I just draw the council's attention to page one-hundred-and-ninety-two, which is the budget for the Planning and Development Department. The salaries and wages line item in fiscal eighteen-nineteen was two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand and change, and it is being proposed at two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand this year, a reduction of almost forty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any further questions? Any staff wish to comment on this issue?
I just wanna remind everybody that we're hoping to see a lot of growth in our, uh, Four Corners area. So I'm thinking this next year, now, that was before COVID-nineteen, so who knows what's gonna happen now, but there, they could be a very busy, uh, department in the next year, we hope they are.
Okay, and no further questions? John, you can proceed.
Thank you, I'll, gonna share the screen again. Uh, next is, uh, townwide highlights on pages two-hundred-and-two to two-hundred-and-five. Employee benefits have increased by one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Uh, this is due to Social Security, Medicare, and municipal employees' retirement system, adjusted for salary adjustments. The MERS rate increased, uh, public safety employees increased from a nineteen-point-four-five percent to a twenty-point-nine-five percent. Regular employees increased from a thirteen-point-seven-three percent to a fourteen-point-nine-five percent. Employee share increased from two-point-seven-five percent to three-point-two-five percent. So a total increase of two-hundred-and-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars from, uh, going from one million, twelve thousand, one-hundred-and-forty dollars to one million, two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars. There's a health insurance decrease of forty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty dollars. And then in our insurance, liability, auto, and property, there's an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars, which reflects their current estimates. And in our contingencies, decreased by sixty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars.
Uh, council questions? Um, I have questions. They met.
Can you me put it back up?
No, I got it on my other one. The employee's share of MERS went up from two-seventy-five to three-twenty-five. How did that happen?
I'm gonna get it, John.
Yes, please.
Uh, it, it's actually gone up the last couple of years. Um, there was some changes at the state level that allows for adjustments in the employee rate as well.
Did that happen last year?
I think it was the year before, I'm not sure.
Wow. I didn't remember that. Okay, um, I'm, I'm also estimating since the, uh, employees, the, the town's contribution to MERS is based on an actuarial calculation involving stock market performance. Given the last couple of weeks on the stock market, I would assume we can expect to see this percentage go up this year.
So, um, it, it, it doesn't, they don't adjust it that quickly.
Okay.
But I'm sure it will have a long-term impact. But, um, the current fiscal year was the first year in a three-year adjustment to the MERS rate. So recall, a number of years ago, we, we had a big hit to MERS, and the state tried to jump us all a huge amount in one year. Well, last year, when they started to implement this, they realized that they needed to sort of implement it gradually. So this is the second year in a three-year implementation of getting to the rate that they need to be, based on the actuarial study that was done last year. My guess is, next year, they'll probably do another. They're typically done every two or three years, another actuarial study to see how the funding is holding up compared to what the pension payments will be in the future, projected pension payments. Um, so, right now, we have the rate as it is set for next year. I think they will probably hold that. Um, but certainly, the hit to the market currently would have some impact. But again, they'll look at it long-term. They're not just gonna look at, uh, you know, where we are now. It depends how much the market bounces back.
Yeah.
It definitely has an impact.
Are you still seeing data that says that this fund is essentially fully funded? Or are they falling behind?
Um, I haven't looked at it recently, but I think they're, they're pretty close.
Okay, David, we know what you're gonna say. You don't like MERS at all.
Oh, Mayor, thank you very much. I'm glad you pointed out, uh, you know, mentioned the word MERS. I was, I've been raring to, to go to discuss this topic, and I was afraid it wasn't quite on our agenda, but, uh, because it was subsumed in these, uh, this issue on page two-oh-three, but I'm glad, I'm glad you raised it. Look, I'll tell you, I'll, let me cut to the chase, and then I'll elaborate. If any of my colleagues would care to peruse, and you don't have to do it now, page one-hundred-and-ten, you will see the figures for the Connecticut Municipal Employees Retirement System. In the current budget year, twenty-nineteen slash twenty, our contribution is plus or minus a thousand dollars. And I rounded it off by a couple, plus or minus, you know, to the nearest hundred, about a thousand and thirty-eight dollars. And, and by the way, there are four lines there for MERS, because they break out firefighters, and I, other employees are lumped in a separate line item, and then there's administration, and then there's some kind of adjustment. I'd just add all four. It's a thousand and thirty-eight dollars in the current fiscal year. Whereas in the coming fiscal year, the budget we're considering now, it goes up to about one-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty. And that's the approximately two-hundred-and-one-thousand-dollar increase that Sherry so accurately, um, referred to in her, um, summary comments earlier this week. Folks, that is a nineteen-and-a-half percent increase in one year. Now, I know, there are always explanations for this. The, the state decided, the controller, the controller's office, who, that would administer this program, decided, uh, we need to get a little more real. They were assuming, I don't know, eight percent, or seven percent, or some, you know, increase every year, and then they realized that's not realistic. I, I'm assure, I'm, I, I can assure you that under the current, uh, climate of the economy, with this issue going on now, that's going to be reduced, you know, probably even more, as they, as they get even more real. And this is the problem. I wanna remind my colleagues, I raised this issue when I first had the honor of joining this town council in twenty-twelve, that this defined benefit pension program is a sinkhole. Now, I know, my colleagues don't wanna discuss policy, and you don't wanna hear this again, but I have to say, we could have taken steps, and we still can, that could ameliorate, slightly alleviate the situation going forward many years. There are things in statute, you know, that limit the employee contribution to this program to two-and-a-half percent of their salary. The state doesn't do it for its own employees, it's negotiable. But it's not negotiable for those sixty-eight or sixty-nine towns out of this state's one-hundred-and-sixty-nine that were unwise enough as to sign up for, into this sinkhole, as known as C-MERS. But that's a statute change, but it would, it could be changed. Also, there could be a change that would allow new employees to be put into a defined contribution program. I, I would not want to alter the agreement made with, you know, employees that, you know, are already in the program, are vested and all that. We're talking going forward, but you never wanted to discuss it. I remember eight years ago, I brought it up, and it was kind of referred to the Personnel Committee, where Her Honor, the mayor, who was then a member, uh, the chair of that committee, and, and then council member Paul Shapiro, not yet mayor then, he was basically laughed out of that committee. I don't want this flagged. I don't want this referred to the Personnel Committee. Nothing's gonna come of it. I'm saying, if this council was ever serious about addressing this, I'm, I'm gonna say, this is a time bomb. You could expect other years where a nineteen-and-a-half percent increase, or a fifteen percent increase, or a, and a twelve percent increase. The assumptions about good times ahead, and the, the fund is gonna increase by this much, are not gonna happen. And as more and more people retire, and the contribution of existing employees is capped two-and-a-half percent, you're gonna find it's gonna go further and further behind. I have to say, as a passing comment, the question is, when asked of Sherry, is this fund fully, fully financed? In a way, it is. That's one good thing about C-MERS. Unlike other pension plans that are defined benefit, where people can kind of pretend that life goes on and everything's gonna be fine, and then they wind up with bigger and bigger unfunded pension liabilities, there's one good thing about C-MERS, that even though it is a defined benefit pension program, they make you pay quarterly and make that fund more or less flush. And that's why you start seeing, like we are seeing into the coming budget year, a nineteen-and-a-half percent increase, because they're not allowing that fund to have large unfunded pension liabilities the way states and other municipalities around the country have done. So that's the only good thing about it. We're seeing what the consequence is of being in a defined benefit pension plan. And if this council never wants to address that issue and do the kind of concerted action I tried to bring up, and it was not put on the agenda, you'd never wanna have a discussion. If you ever wanna, to the, to the reigning, and yes, Mayor, the omnipotence, of omnipotent political party, ever wants to have a serious discussion about, do we want this time bomb to keep exploding in our face? Or do we wanna do something about it? Do let me know. Bring it up. You have all the power. You can do it, if you want. But this is, I wanna point out in summary again, there's a nineteen-and-a-half percent increase in MERS going from the current budget year to the coming budget year. That's on page one-ten, if you wanna check the numbers. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Shaken?
I just have a very simple question, uh, for Sherry about the retirement system. Is it still your opinion, as the Town Finance Director, that the town is most adequately financially served by being part of the MERS system, as opposed to striking it out on our own?
Uh, there's a, there's a lot of things to consider there. Um, but I, I know we have looked at this in the past, and I wasn't part of all of those discussions. There's, it's, it's a really complicated issue. Um, right now, with MERS, you cannot have some people on and some people off. It's all in or all out. Um, but there are a lot of issues with hosting your own pension plans, and a lot of communities that are doing that. Um, and there, there are some real serious, long-term obligations there. Um, so it, it would warrant, I think, a lot more research. So it would warrant, I think, a lot more research. You know, right now, I think, you know, there's, there are some, a lot of benefits to being part of MERS. Whether, I can't speak to the cost benefit of it right now off the top. We could look into it for you if you'd like. But the employer, there were a couple that were said that were, I'm sorry, but there were a couple of things that were not accurate. We, we are allowed to, or the state is allowed to increase and has been increasing the employee share. So that is no longer capped at 2, 2.5%. We're up to 3.25%. I know it's, you can argue whether that's enough, but there is the ability to increase that.
Municipalities?
Pardon?
I had a different question earlier.
Municipalities, Ron.
David, the answer is yes. Ron.
Forgive me. A year ago, we had discussions about bringing this, various discussions to Personnel Committee, and I believe we were superseded by the onslaught of other events. I would have no objection because this is, to me, an extraordinarily complex and very important issue to having this discussed in great length in the Personnel Committee. Not now, not tonight, in the Personnel Committee and deal with it from that point. And that is something that I seriously advocate.
Okay, well, once we get a town manager, I'm sure that that's one of the things the council will ask the Personnel Committee to look at. It's been on our books for a while. I would say this, that the advantage of being part of a system that requires you to pay the actuarially necessary sum guarantees that you do not have this huge unfunded liability that every other pension system in the state has acquired. Where people have chosen to support current employees over payments to the fund. They've made all kinds of justification, but that's how the unfundedness develops. Any other questions on this issue? John, do you want to proceed to the next section? You're muted.
Said yes, I'm sharing my screen again and. So next is operating transfer highlights, page 207. Transfer to other funds will increase by $628,710.
John, the screen is showing the first slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. The wrong one. Still showing the first one. Hold on.
Can you run the bar down the left-hand side to get to it?
No, it's showing, it's not showing the screen I want to show. Hold on. I don't know what happened.
I will remind folks that we've been going almost two hours and people are going to get tired pretty quick, so.
Right, so I apologize.
There you go. You got it.
Operating transfer highlights, page 207, transfer to other funds has an increase of $628,710. Parks and Recreation will increase by $34,010. That service fund increases by $289,750. And that's the Four Corners Sewer Project Capital Projects, an increase of $224,870. And the Medical Pension Trust increases by $65,000.
David.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pick up on the Parks and Recreation. I know I started to raise it earlier and it was suggested we defer that to when that's on our.
I am going to ask you to defer. We don't have any of the backup information in front of us now. So I think we need to wait for it, Kurt.
I'm waiting, I'd just like to highlight one thing. You can consider it as something to be discussed more in detail when that does come up. But since it is on the page 207 that we are discussing now and Mr. Carrington did specifically mention that line among the lines.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, I want to point out, this was, this was very eloquently presented in the issue paper on page 26, that the support has gone up for the Parks and Recreation Fund by some 36 or something thousand dollars. And I remember from last year, and here it is confirmed, that we had gone up on Parks and Recreation from 536 to 581,000. We see that, you know, on the fourth line down on that table on page 207. And now it's going up to 615.
I know it's a weak block, but I'm going to rule you out of order because we will have this discussion on the 16th.
Okay.
We will have the discussion then. All right, other questions about this page? No other questions about this page? All right, John, proceed to the next one.
Next is the other operating highlights, pages 244 to 245, for information purposes only. Funding primarily comes from other sources, local grants, special education grants and tuition donations and charge for services.
Questions? No questions? All right, proceed to the next one. David.
Well, I understand that Mr. Carrington jumped to page 240 something. That's fine, and I would appreciate hearing more about that. I didn't happen to notice that was among the pages that was on the agenda, but that's fine. But what was on the agenda was pages that included 218. You know, and we kind of jumped away from the capital fund, who I thought we would stay on it a little longer because there were some things, I mean, that was specifically on the agenda.
Capital's coming up, David. Capital's coming up. That'll be next. We're not going in page number, keeping capital separate. We're not going in page order.
And page 244 is on the bottom line of our agenda for tonight. I think you all may get a chance to meet my refian. If he walks across in front of the computer again.
So now we're going to the Capital Projects Highlights, which is on the agenda. It's in, it's the right column, so that's why we led to the end. Pages 213 to 219. Budget and funding sources are described on 213 to 214. Project narratives are 215 to 219. And we're only talking about the ones that apply to these that we discussed tonight. So no Public Works and no Parks and Rec.
John, the first, the first item, the biggest one here is software under general government.
Yes, and I'll let Sheri discuss that. She's.
So that's the upgrade to the Human Resource and Financial Management System. So this will be going into capital from the, a portion of it will be paid by the Board of Education, portion by Region 19, and a portion by the town. And this reflects primarily the town's piece. And it was split based on the same split that we use for information technology shared services. But every, every entity is paying their share. It's a huge upgrade. It's going to be very complex, but I think it's something we really need in order to get up with, increase our efficiency, increase our capabilities for what we can do in terms of simplifying human resources work. There will be an employee portal where they can go and get their own information rather than calling Human Resources and lots and lots of reporting capabilities from the general ledger and budget module that we haven't had in the past. The system we have now is very, very cumbersome.
How does this work with open government?
So we'll have to have a different fee to Open Gov so that we have that platform. Or there's an option to do something with the modules that we're looking at. That would be a step down the road.
Okay, and will this require annual payments as well as the initial cost?
Yes. So this is, this is the one-time setup and conversion costs. We can, if need be, if we have questions of Jamie when he's on, we can, we can talk about that as well. But just like we pay admins on an annual fee, we would pay an annual fee for using this system. And the other difference with this is this would be web-based. We wouldn't be hosting it here. So we would have some savings on staff time and updates to the system as well. But yes, we would have, we would have annual costs. This cost here for this year would include the annual maintenance costs as well as the implementation and conversion costs.
And I assume that Jamie has spent time determining whether it's security and it's the protections against hacking.
Yes, we've had many conversations with them because there's a lot of sensitive information that would be included in terms of employee information. So what we're looking at is going with Munis and they have probably the most installations in Connecticut than any, any other software vendor. So they have a lot of experience with this, but Jamie has been involved in the selection team since, selection of the software since day one.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I had a question, Mayor. Sam Bruder.
Hi, Sam. You're not on my screen for some reason. Go ahead.
I had a question about the, the Public Works section on capital improvement, specifically the road resurfacing. I know that John had mentioned that.
Sam, I think we're going to get to that on another date. It's like Parks and Rec, it isn't on our agenda for tonight.
Oh, I apologize.
The part of the capital fund that has to do with general government, public safety, community services, and community development.
Thank you.
David.
Thanks, Mayor. Starting with the last item on our list here, page 219. Can we discuss the technology infrastructure or is that something coming up? Is that part of what we're on now?
That would be part of the shared services and education. So we have a night where we're talking education, shared finance, and shared technology. So that piece would really be discussed there and Jamie will be available for that, that night.
That's fine. I can, I can bring up my, my points then.
Don't forget it, David. We'll do it then.
I'll try not to.
Make sure you remember it.
I'm not questioning Jamie's judgment or the cost. It's more about if we're charging the schools and the high school, but I will bring that up at the time. Mayor, I would like to discuss it then. I'm questioning a couple of things here. The, on page 218, near the top, I mean, we're spending $120,000 on the parking garage mainly in Nash-Zimmer. I mean, and I think that most of that is for lighting. Don't we have lighting there already? I mean, that's a lot of money to be dropping on that parking garage.
Mayor, this would also be discussed when we do Public Works and Facilities.
Okay, I'll discuss that.
Hey, welcome. Alfred Tony has just joined us. Welcome.
Yeah, well, okay, just like I'd like to discuss the technology infrastructure again, not questioning the necessity, just that we're charging our two clients, you know, the two school systems for it.
Yes, when the time comes.
And when they're right at the point, and when it comes to Public Works, as you pointed out, I have, I didn't know that parking garage went with that, but no, that makes sense. Why are we spending more on lighting and also?
Yes, we'll get there.
On the top of page 217, store center improvements, 15,000. I mean, I don't.
We'll get there. We'll get there, David. That's not on our agenda for tonight. Ben.
Okay, I just have a question. When you say the bus, this is also, this is on the middle of page 217. Excuse my ignorance, but where is the bus garage? I didn't know we had one. You know, we contract with a company to provide.
That's the school bus garage.
Can I make a suggestion? Because this capital budget is all put together by different departments. So can I flag that for future workshop meetings? When we're just talking about individual departments in capital, that we are given more than just page numbers? So what specific departments are we looking at on the agenda today? Because a lot of the, every question that's been asked so far is about other parts of the capital budget from other departments that we're going to handle on other nights.
I'm fine with that. Just please reference, please reference those, those pages, page numbers again when we are discussing those respective departments.
Exactly.
Thank you, my gosh.
John.
My plan originally was to share these pages and I was going to, but you guys said you couldn't read it. So I was going to go down all the pages. I apologize for that. I should have just did it without showing it. But I can do that now if you'd like. Or I can take us down.
John, we can't hear you for some reason. You're frozen.
You're frozen, Tony, maybe. I can hear John.
If you do have a book and you're looking at page 213, that's where you'll see the breakdown by service unit. So you'll see general government, public safety. We would skip past Public Works and Facilities and go to community services, community development on page 214. So if you look at 213 and 214, you'll see the projects and then the description is in the other pages.
Tony, do we still have you or did we lose you?
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, I'm still here.
Just checking.
I guess something we can do in the future is maybe, if we know how we're going to do the presentation, we could list them in the book. Maybe the way the presentation goes, just so it's easier to follow. Next year.
Well, I understand this has been a difficult year. Okay, so any further questions on the capital projects having to do with general government, public safety, community services, or community development? No, I think then that we move on to other operating.
We did that.
We did that.
Okay, so we hope, Mansfield Discovery Depot is not available to us yet. Parks and Rec, we are going to hold until the 16th. And that covers the budget review. Now, now we have on the agenda is a discussion of proposed budget or council questions. Now, we've received, we've had a number of questions as we've gone through and we've flagged a number of items for discussion in the future. Does anybody wish to raise any other issue regarding the areas of the budget that we have been under review tonight? Not the future ones, just tonight. No, is there any public comment? Have we received any emails or phone calls or anything asking for public comments?
I did not receive any.
Okay, would you have gotten to John or would Sarah Anne?
I think Tasha in IT, and they would forward it to me, but I've been in contact with them and haven't gotten any.
Okay, Ben.
Is a motion to adjourn in order?
I believe it is.
Then I would like to move to adjourn. Then I would like to move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Before there's a...
Oops, sorry.
Before we vote, I just want to say thank you very much to everybody, including the staff who has hung in with us, even though their budgets were not necessarily being discussed. But this is just the beginning of the process. Several of you are new to this process, and I encourage you to, you know, ask all the questions you'd like, make sure you understand what we're doing as we go along. Some of this stuff can get pretty complex. You have to review the upcoming budget dates. We have a public hearing on Monday, the thirteenth.
Tony, John.
And then, and that is...
What? John has his hand up.
Oh, I can't see John, sorry. Go ahead, John.
I just, since we have so much time before the next meeting, if councillors do have questions, it would be great if we could get those ahead of time, and we could possibly have the answers for you at the next meeting. So if you're, you know, some of you might add questions on capital tonight, like Public Works, I heard a couple, you know, send those questions to me, we'll get the answers, and we'll have a more productive meeting possible.
So the public, the meeting on the thirteenth, the public hearing, will be John presenting his budget to the public?
No.
Am I, no?
That's where they give their comment on the budget. So it's, the public comes in and gives you feedback on...
Okay, okay. So it's just a response to what we've already done, what you've done on the thirtieth. Okay. So we will be doing that online. It will be our first experience of a public hearing online, and we'll see how it goes. So again, thank you one and all, and all those favor of adjournings, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody, David, okay, I thought David wanted, stay longer. Okay.
Aye, everyone, good night.
Good night.
Stay safe, everyone.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Good night.
Good night.